Camera's on.
All right, Town of Tupperboro Planning Board Meeting, April 5th. Call it the order and we're gonna do things a little bit quicker, skip the minutes from now, go right to our guest speaker, Mary T. Malager, Gravel Tax Fraser, first day in New Hampshire.
Hi. I guess what you would like me to do is to explain a little bit about 155E. Is that in the local regulations? I know that you've recently adopted some local regulations, have new ordinance. What the main driving force is, is RSA 155E. That is the local regulation of earth excavation. That's statutory. All towns have to comply with that statute. The municipalities may adopt, in addition to 155E, local earth excavation regulations. Your regulations cannot conflict with the law. They may be more stringent, but they cannot be less stringent. When they enacted 155E, they put in a grandfathering. And so for those pits that had been existing, they call them existing excavations under RSA 155E2, they said that if the owner had a lawfully existing excavation as of August 24th of 1979, and it had been removing material for two years prior to that, they could continue excavating without a permit, so long as they met certain criteria. And the criteria is spelled out within the existing excavation sections, 155E2, row number one. And it talks about zoning, it's exempt from zoning and other ordinances, so long as they're in compliance back at that point in time. They had to continue to excavate. They couldn't have stopped and then started. One of the requirements was that the existing excavations had to supply to the regulator, who's a planning board, a report between August 4th of 1989 and August 4th of 1991. That report could have been down on the back of a napkin, on a piece of paper, but it had to contain certain items. It had to tell you, tell the regulator where the location of the excavation was and when it first began. Had to give a description of the limits of the permissible expansion area. How much area, if you had 100 acres and you intended to excavate 50 of it, that's what you had to tell the regulator, or you're gonna excavate all 100. You had to give an estimate of the area that was open, already excavated, at that time. And you had to give an estimate of the amount of commercially viable earth that was left on the property. So you had a two-year period from August 4th of 1989 to August 4th of 1991 to get that report into the regulator. I call that the golden ticket. Okay, so if you did that, that was a valuable piece of paper, turn it to the regulator, that would have grandfathered your property from local regulations and ordinances that came after. It would have grandfathered you from a permit.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
How would they have known to do that?
Thank you.
In here, it says that the, within, "The owners or operators of any existing excavation area for which no permit has been obtained in this chapter shall file a report with the local regulator within one year after receiving written notice of this requirement from the regulator, and in no case later than two years following August 4th of 1989." The regulator should have sent out a notice. It was in all the papers and people who were in the business should have been aware of, you know, what the change in requirements were, because the law went through a lot of changes at that point in time.
Mary, what about a pit that's been going on since 1935?
That is what they were grandfathering through this event.
All right, well, you were just saying certain years, so I was just going there.
Yeah, you had to notify, that's how I get more of that.
It had to be existing prior to August 24th of 1979 and be removing material as of August 24th of 1977. So if you had started in 1930s and had continued, then you were within that existing excavation. That all you had to do was do that report. And that would have grandfathered you from local regulations and permits. The only thing that you would have been subject to are the minimum and express operational standards in 155E and the minimum and express reclamation standards in 155E5 and 155E5A. Those would be the only standards under 155E that you had to operate under. So the question should have been, and what the planning board should have been doing is during that time, they should have been looking for that report. And if you turned that in, you would have hopefully locked it up in a safe someplace, because it was a very valuable document. That would have grandfathered you from local permitting. If that report was not done between that time period, the excavation would fall into an abandoned excavation. So you either had to reclaim the pit within a certain amount of time, or you had to come in and go for a permit itself, under 155E3.
But the planning board was supposed to notify us? Or the selectmen were supposed to notify us as pit owners about that?
The regulator is the planning board and is otherwise voted by the town. So if the town had voted by a town meeting, you would either become the selectman or the ZBA. So unless that had been voted, then the regulator is the selectman. And the selectman or the regulator, you haven't just assumed this position recently. You've always been the regulator of 155E.
You mean the planning.
Planning board, thanks.
I guess none of us has been here past six years.
Actually, I can speak to that, because I was chairman of the planning board at the time and the, we never did anything with it in the 80s, period. It's like it never even existed.
Even if the regulator did not notify, it was still the operator's, property owner's responsibility, because here it says "in no case", and "in no case later than two years". So even if they didn't notify, you still had the responsibility to get that in. Now, I'm not an attorney. I don't profess to be an attorney. You'll want to check with legal counsel, but in dealing with other towns who did nothing over the years.
You're not the only town, right?
You're not the only town. The towns that did nothing as far as 155E, in fact, when the excavation tax came into existence, the department sent out letters to the towns saying, "Give us a list of all your excavations and are you actively enforcing 155E?" And half the towns wrote back and said, "What's 155E?" So it was evident that a lot of the towns didn't know what they should be doing. So dealing with other towns where they have discovered that, you know, we should have been doing something back at this point in time, and the fact that you did nothing to stop the excavations, those areas that you have continued to allow to operate, you've assessed, you filed the intents to excavate over the years, you've paid the property tax on the gravel pit. In the other towns, their attorneys have mentioned, it's called municipal estoppel, where the town allowed it to happen and did nothing to stop it. So, and again, I'm not an attorney, I'm not, but this is what I've dealt with in other towns. That because you allowed that to happen, then you inadvertently grandfathered that use of that area. However, if your area was 20 acres open and you have 50, you could not expand beyond what is there today upon this discovery saying, "We didn't do it right." So essentially, the town, by not doing anything, has grandfathered, inadvertently grandfathered that open area. Any expansion beyond that would require a 155E permit.
Would be considered opening, it was cleared for excavation, or are you in it?
Excavative, excavative. Under the minimum and express operation standards, if you did do that report between the time that was due, and let's say that at the time between, you know, August 4th of 1989, you had 10 acres open. The minimum and express operational standards required that for those areas not yet excavated, that the property owner submit a reclamation bond for those areas not yet excavated. So even though they were grandfathered for that 10 acres, any expansion beyond that, they would have to have a reclamation bond for those areas to be excavated. So if you've got 10 acres open right now and you want to expand, you're gonna have to come in before the planning board for a permit. They're gonna require a reclamation bond for that new area that you're opening up. In addition to 155E regulations, there's also the DES, Department of Environmental Services, alteration of terrain permit. And there is a grandfathering through that where whatever was disturbed contiguous area as of May of 1981 is grandfathered. The alteration of terrain permits require that any disturbance excavation of earth, construction projects, more than 100,000 square feet of area, which is 2.3 acres, require an alteration of terrain permit. If you're within the shoreline protection area, it's 50,000 square feet of disturbance, contiguous disturbance. So whatever you had open as of May of 1981, so if you had 10 acres that was open, which you can prove through aerial photography, you could have expanded an additional 100,000 square feet, which would be another 2.3 acres, before you are required to have an alteration of terrain permit. In alteration terrain permit, a lot of people think, "Well, it's phased. I can do two, and then I can reclaim it and I can move on to the next two." Alteration of terrain doesn't do phasing. It's if you intend to disturb more than. So if you are permitted for 25 acres, you are intending to excavate 25 acres and you'd need an alteration of terrain permit for that. So I think what the town has tried to do is to try and get a handle on what, you know, they have for gravel pits. They've adopted some regulations and ordinances. They've asked the excavators to come in to talk to them. I don't know how much further do you want to get into 172B? And how much further do you want to get into 155E? Because they do have a three-hour class.
If you guys have any questions, you just state your name for Leanne, so she can, she's gonna shorthand it all up in the minutes.
So like I said, I think the town's trying to get a handle on it. It's, you know, to get you in.
Yeah, we're trying to point them in the direction of the shortest route possible. How's that? Without trying to go through what we went through on St. Elrod Road two years ago. We've already, through zoning, exempted them. Not to go to zoning, if they have been excavating prior to 2014, 2015, we've grandfathered those in to skip zoning.
Okay, ZBA, correct.
So now it's the process of the planning process. We're just trying to get the most streamlined process we can. Is there one?
Well, I guess I would ask the excavation.
Okay, so first off, are we gonna,
Steve Hunter, yeah.
Are we gonna be required to have a complete survey of our property?
Again, that's up to the regulator, okay? Some towns would not, I mean, when you say a complete survey, are you going to be expanding or are you talking as to what you actually have open now?
I'm talking about the piece of property, number one. So some people have 100-acre piece of property that their pit is on. Some people have a 25-acre piece of property that their pit is on. And the cost to survey the entire parcel to be able to show is, it's not a lot different than if you come in to build your house on your lot. You've already got it surveyed in that two acres. It costs you, I don't know how much, but, and then you can plot out your house and your septic and all that sort of thing. But you have a survey. Most of us that own a piece of property, it's never been surveyed. It's just, it's just a chunk of land boughted by Mr. Genie and boughted by so-and-so and so-and-so. So that right there is a big expense for all of us that are only selling a few yards of material a year.
And that's where you're gonna have to determine, you know, what is it that you want to do with that piece of property? Is it viable to go in and permit the entire parcel? Is there material left on that parcel? That's where you're gonna have to make that decision. You've already got a certain amount of area that's open. If you are going to be expanding what is already there, then you're gonna have to have a plan, okay? Depending upon what the planning board requires, I know that some towns will take, unless you're gonna go right out to the borders, they will accept something less than a survey. As long as it's accurate, you're able to give the topography, you're able to show the slopes to their satisfaction. I mean, if you do it on the back of a napkin, it's not gonna be, it's gonna be to scaly and be able to show where it's located. They should be able to go out and take a look at it to see where it's located. They're gonna want elevations, okay, to know where it is, where are wetlands. And besides that, like I said, if you are going to be expanding that disturbed area, DES is going to require plans. And those are typically engineered in survey plans.
So that's where we jump into it. And I don't know, and I don't think anybody here knows, how much material would be used out of, and I'll just use mine as an example, out of my pit in the next five years, because nobody here knows what the economy in this town's gonna be to require some of that material. This is already a dead town and there's nothing going on here. And, you know, I mean, you've got a few McMansions being built on the lake and there's no industry here, there's nothing like that. So, you know, I don't see where the $50,000 cost of getting these plans completed and your alteration of terrain permits and all that sort of thing is going to ever be realized back out of the material.
And that's where, you know, maybe you wanna, you know, look at it and say, "How much area do I have open and what's the minimum amount?" You know, I mean, I think the towns tried to say that if you've got 30 acres, they've grandfathered you from zoning. Perhaps you could approach the planning board and say, "We're not really sure, you know, how much longer this is gonna last or if it's gonna be viable. Can we do some phasing and work in phases? And if the economy is, picks up and there's demand and everybody else runs out of the supply, that they would allow you to continue on that property as, in doing phases, so you're not going with the entire property. You're doing phasing locally. That does not exclude you from the alteration of terrain."
Yeah.
Right.
And the alteration of terrain is a big expense.
Yes. But there's no, they can't exempt you from that.
May I, could you, again, go back to the dates on the alteration of terrain? And what, you said after a specific date, anything more than 100,000 for the alteration?
May of 1981.
Was it, if you excavated more than the 100,000?
No, whatever was disturbed.
Right.
Okay, so if I had 10 acres of disturbance as of May of 1981, that 10 acres is exempt basically from alteration of terrain.
Pretty, 1981, okay.
Yep, I could go, I could go around the perimeter. I could excavate 2.3 acres and not have to have a permit. But once I went over that 2.3, you know, my 12.3, then whatever I'm going out into would require an alteration permit.
Just out of curiosity, anybody ever got an alteration of terrain permit? Now, see, that, the real issue isn't this. The real issue was DES.
That's what I just said, the alteration of terrain permit is expensive.
But, but basically.
After the reclamation plan.
Well, basically, your alteration of terrain permit would be the same plan.
It's the same plan.
Same plan.
But you pay so much per square footage over 100,000 square feet, over your first 100,000. So if you had a 15-acre chunk, and I don't have that number in front of me, but it's, it gets expect, that gets expensive.
In addition to the survey, yeah.
Let's just assume somebody had a pit that was 10 acres back in 1981, that's now 20 acres and no alteration of terrain permit has ever been applied. And I realize this is not your department. How do they, do you know how they typically handle on stuff that's been going on for 35 years and the permit was never?
Retroactive permits.
Right. And you gotta go back and pay for the square footage and?
I don't, I'm not sure, but I know that, I don't know, it's probably about two years ago, the alteration of terrain asked me for my list of excavations and they were starting up north and they were looking at aerial photography and making their way down and getting a lot of bits that had never been, you know, filed for. Whether or not they missed this area or.
Never got to file it.
Don't get to it yet. They could discover that you should have had an alteration of terrain and come back. It's just like, if I find that there's an excavation that had never filed a notice of intent to excavate, they're subject to filing since 1998. So I have people filing for 20 years' worth of excavation because it's taxation. So we're talking taxing, you know, versus regulation. DES has the ability that you, just because you didn't do it doesn't mean that you are exempt from it. So some of you may be subject to it. But the plans that are done for alteration of terrain, basically, they're gonna show the existing elevations. They're gonna show the final elevations. That's your reclamation plan. The only thing that's different between an alteration of terrain plan and 155E plan is that the 155E plan has to show test pits to show the average elevation of the groundwater in and around the excavation. So basically, that's the only difference. DES plans would supersede the towns when it comes to like wetlands and whatnot. The town has setbacks under 155E that has to be met. It's 50 feet from a disapproving of butter and 10 feet from an approving of butter. So there are setbacks within the statute. DES may have other setbacks from wetlands and stuff like that. So it's pretty, you know, comprehensive, as far as plans and whatnot. So I think, you know, what you have to do is, you know, come before the planning board and say, "Look, this is what we have open right now. This is where we're at." You're gonna have to figure out what is it that we want to do? Do we want to continue excavating? How much more do we want to continue excavating? You can look at the aerial photography. I don't know if you've been out on Google Earth at all. Have any of you been on Google Earth? It's a really great tool where you can go out and, if you download Google Earth Pro, you can actually go around and calculate the area that's open. You hit this little clock on the bar that you can click on that clock, you can go back in time and look at aerial photography. Okay, so once you find your spot and you're looking down at it, you can click on that clock and then go back. It's a tool I use a lot. Okay, and if you get the Pro, then you do a polyline around it. You click around the outer edges and it'll calculate that area for you. Okay, so it's a tool that the town, you know, and you can work on to get, figure out what do you have, what's open, what's existing, and start from there. That'd be my suggestion, since nothing's been done. You've allowed it to happen all this time in order to get a handle on it. I think that's, that's a starting point. If any of you are, you know, do subject design or whatever, I'm sure you're, you know, used to going out and taking measurements and doing sketching and, you know, taking some elevations and stuff like that. And maybe that would be the thing to do also, is to try and prepare a plan. I know that DES, if your excavation, no water's gonna be leaving. It's more of a bowl type where everything's coming in. They're not as hard on the requirements, because nothing's gonna be leaving the site. Their concern is that the, you know, water leaving the property, groundwater. In addition to DES, there's also the EPA. Okay, anybody that disturbs one acre or more where there's a possibility of groundwater leaving the site has to have a stormwater protection plan. Okay, so you need plans for that. So it all works together. EPA's, they call it a SWEP, works in conjunction with the alteration of terrain. They're trying to, you know, retain and keep the groundwater, you know, water safe, water quality. So that's the whole, the big picture. And if your property comes in and it's going down and it's all down, it's not as critical, you know, when it comes to alteration of terrain, to have the engineered plans, because nothing's going anywhere. You don't have the wetlands. So it's a lot easier as far as permitting and, you know, plans. But my suggestion would be, excuse me, that you determine what you have, where you want to go, okay? Because remember, you start expanding, you're gonna have to get a permit. You're gonna, you may or may not get caught from DES as far as having to, having had a permit, but if you're gonna be expanding, then you're going to, you know, be required to have an alteration of terrain permit. So you're gonna have to figure out what, how much viable earth do you have there? You know, is it worth going through it? Or is it worth just staying where you are? And then even if you are staying where you are and you're not gonna be continuing on, whatever you've opened up has to be reclaimed. You're not exempt from reclamation, okay? So any pit, okay, that's been open, has to reclaim the property. It doesn't necessarily mean that you're gonna go in and spread, you know, five or six inches of loam, because it probably wasn't five or six inches of loam to start with. But you're gonna do the slopes so that they're not eroding, okay? You're gonna stabilize those. You're gonna get it capable of growing, you know, and restoring yourself. Sometimes if you walk away from it, nature does a pretty good job reclaiming itself. So if it's good enough in there to have nature start, you know, getting the pines coming up and the other trees coming up, then you have an easy job of stabilizing the rest. If you are planning on, say, with your property, you've excavated it down to where you want to be, and, you know, what's the highest and best use of it? Would it be for a campground? Would it be building lots? Would it be some other, you know, used storage, you know, buildings?
Solar panels?
Solar farm, okay? That's alternative use of that area. And under 155E, excuse me, there is an exception. It's under 155E5B. And basically, the regulator upon application and bond hearing may grant an exception in writing to the standards contained in 155E4A5 and 5A with caution. So they could grant an exception to the reclamation standard. So if you came in and said, "Look, I have the opportunity to put in a solar farm. It doesn't make any sense to reclaim the property where they're gonna have to tear it up and keep the grass down, if any, to put in the solar panels, to put in the electrical. Or if you were doing storage buildings, you're gonna put in the concrete." The only thing they'd be concerned about are the rest of the slopes that those are stabilized. So there are alternative uses. And, you know, of course, the planning board's gonna wanna make sure that that gets done. So.
So in my, every, I think every job I've ever done, whether it be a house site or whatever, I've had materials that have to leave the site and I take them back to my pit. And I put the loam in a pile and I put the boulders in another pile and stuff like that. If I decided, if I decided that I wasn't gonna spend $50,000 to get my permit, can I still clean up all that recyclable material without having a permit? my permit, can I still clean up all that recyclable material without having a permit?
The, tends to be part of the nature of the beast, is most people who have gravel pits are usually in the business of, you know, excavation and, and site work, and you bring back the spoils. You know, you bring back the loam, you cut a little bit and take it back over there and you have some, and they get back what you took away. That loam that you have piled on site, you could use on the site to reclaim it. But if you said that you were going to stop excavating completely and that you were gonna just use that as a contractor's yard, okay, where you're gonna continue to, you know, park your equipment and bring material in and process it and then haul it out, you may not have the grandfathering as a pit because you're not excavating. That may be another use. That would be up to the town and the ZVA to say if that's an allowed use, because one fifty-five E pertains to excavation sites, not processing yards. Okay, I mean, you know, manufacturing of bark mulch and everything else, that's a different use. So they may grant that you for that, or give you a permit for that use or whatever, I'm not sure what the ZVA would do, but you, you couldn't just, you know, part of the reclamation, you just can't leave piles of stuff all over the place.
If it's a different use that has been ongoing all along since nineteen fifty, seventy, wouldn't that use be grandfathered since it had predated zoning in the town?
I'm not an attorney.
Well, you play one pretty well.
See, well, those old attorney shows that were on TV, I don't remember.
I just mean, the argument is that it's a different use than the use that's been happening there since whenever, then, wouldn't that use be grandfathered?
Well, the.
Wouldn't it be a non-performing use for the law?
Possibly. Okay, the, the grandfathering under one fifty-five E is for excavation, okay? And basically, it says that under one fifty-five E two A, under the abandoned excavations, it states that if no commercially viable earth has been removed in a two-year period, okay? If, if no earth material is sufficient weight or volume to be commercially useful has been removed during a two-year period, either before August twenty-fourth of nineteen seventy-nine or after, okay, then they become abandoned. So, the grandfathering is an excavation, which is excavating, okay, from the site. You'd have to then look at the definitions of excavation, which mean excavation means a land area which is used or has been used for the commercial taking of earth, including all slopes. And then talks about the excavation site means an area of contiguous land and common ownership upon which excavation takes place. So, when that excavation stops and all he's doing is bringing the material in, I can't answer that question.
But in theory?
Possibly.
I mean, and to that point, it could be a contractor's yard, as long, along with an excavation.
Correct, it could have been two uses.
Right, obviously, yes, and, and most of them are, I mean.
Could have been, they all are.
Yeah, I mean, most guys that have equipment end up parking into the pit or, I mean, that's what we've done for years.
Yeah, you bring the, the stones in and you.
Right, leave the trucks tonight and equipment in, equipment out. So it's a dual use in that sense, yeah. Unless it's, you know, massive hole in the ground going down the side of the hill or something.
Right, within reason.
So again, I mean, that's a, that's a local.
It's a local.
Local thing, okay? So like I said, I, I would suggest that you start figuring out on your end as to what it is that you, what your future plans is on the property and, and try and get something together as to what is there now, so that.
Well, I just think it's a, it's a interesting dilemma that you throw out there. If I, if I go spend my fifty thousand dollars and get my permit, then I can sell my pit to Boston Sand Gravel, and then the town will deal with their attorneys from Dallas, and they, they won't be able to deal with the local person, if you will. So I, so I think that's a slippery slope that can happen. I'm not gonna live forever. I didn't, didn't wanna spend fifty thousand dollars at this stage in my life anyhow, but on that, because, like I said, there's not, there's not much call for material around here. I do think it's a very good idea to use local material versus trucking it for twenty-five or thirty miles, because everybody talks about the damage you do to the ozone there. And if you're gonna truck it twenty-five or thirty miles versus five, there's a big difference there. So I, so I don't think it's beneficial to hinder people from using the, because every local little pit has their whole nucleus of people that use it, that generates a little economy within itself. And I just think that, that the cost prohibitive of this setup is not gonna be good for the town.
Not having these places drive up the cost of construction everywhere. It has to come from somewhere and it's gonna be.
Right, right, and you can send your money to Boston Sand Gravel, or you can send it to Fred Sargent, you know, I mean, that's. No, I'm, I'm serious, I'm serious. And the towns, like I said, I, I think the town's already dead from that. We got, we got no, no place to buy gas, we got no, no convenience store that doesn't have five-time hours, we got, I mean, it's, we got a McMansion on the Wacon, and that's what it is.
I mean, you know, the other thing, you know.
Pack two thousands leaving, you know what I mean, or gone already, you know, I mean, those types of things, the technicals gone.
There used to be a lot in this town.
Yeah, I know, I'm telling you. We over-regulate it and it drives, drives it all away.
Yeah, the, the other aspect to that too is no one wants a gravel pit in their backyard, okay? And those that are existing are existing, and it's not like having to go, you know, through the permitting and stuff like that. So, it, it may make them even more valuable because of the, you know, objection to having pits, and like you said, materials becoming more scarce. So who knows what it's gonna be like in another ten or fifteen or twenty years, you know? I don't have a crystal ball, okay?
Yeah, well, we don't either, and that's why I say, I didn't take much out of my pit last year, because I was hauling off of my storage facility.
Yep.
You know, so I, I mean, I did haul some, so I guess I.
You always wanna take a little.
Stay continuous, but it's kinda like, you know, that's, it kinda like beating your head against the wall.
It depends on what the economy's doing.
Yeah, exactly.
If the economy's good, then we do good. If it's not, then we can not haul much out.
For, just as an aside, for anybody that is interested, Jedry's pit down on twenty-eight, he just went back through the whole process with DES the last two or three years, so if, I mean, you might wanna talk to him or his son, and they can give you a very good idea, because that's pretty good scale operation on what his cost was to, for the alteration of terrain and the rest of it. I, I haven't talked.
I got a whole packet from White Mount Service, they're the ones that did Stockman's down there.
But not only Stockman, but Jedry's too, because Jedry went through the process.
Oh, I got a whole packet from him, and that's where I came up with my numbers. Whole packet from him, he wrote me up a proposal, and he's waiting for me to give him a deposit. I just, I just don't know if I.
So your package is about fifty grand?
Yeah, it's gonna be fifty grand, yeah.
So how many, how many acres?
I have a twenty-five acre piece of property.
Twenty-five acres.
And you may never get a return on it.
Never, never, never get a return.
But DES may show up and just.
And that's fine, you know, I, I, whatever, you know, I, I mean, I don't live on that site, so I guess I could just walk away and start paying taxes and let the town repossess it, and then, I mean, I, I mean, I don't know.
Right.
I'm just. My near, the nearest houses, well, there's one house that's probably a thousand feet away, and then, you know, then, I mean, you've been there, the next, I mean, four thousand feet to the, to the road. So, it's not like I'm in some.
So what, with the report of ex, ex, excavation as far as material, I guess I've probably always been filling this out wrong when it asks for total area. I thought it was total area that could be, you know, as far as property-wise, but it's actually the total area that's open. So if I put seventeen acres down on that, which is the total area that could be touched, because the rest is in current use or whatever around it, then that's wrong. It's only what is currently open.
You're talking about the report of excavating material? Because the intent, when you file the intent, which is your first document.
Yeah, right.
Basically, that information is for the town, okay? And it says the amount of, you know, area that's permitted, and then it asks you for the permit number, so you'd have, it asks you for the total number of acres in the parcel. So if it's a hundred acres, and it asks for the total number of permitted acres, and that's another number. Then it asks for the permit per our, say, one fifty-five E or the report. So that report date is not the excavation report, it's the one between August fourth of eighty-nine and the one to nineteen ninety-one, is that golden ticket date. Then it asks for the amount of area that's currently open, that's being excavated, the amount that's been reclaimed. And basically, the report is now asking you, so as of April one of two thousand and seventeen, you said that you had ten acres open. As of April one, or April, March thirty-first of two thousand and eighteen, which is the end of the tax year, if you expanded, you'd say that I now have eleven acres open. So it's just a matter of keeping track as to what got reclaimed, if the pit has grown or shrunk.
Right.
So if you're only permitted for eleven acres or you're only anticipating.
There is a plan. Most of the grandfathered ones don't have a plan.
Right, but they'll have to produce a plan.
You have to come in at least, tell the regular...
Just come in and say that we're gonna, we're stopping now, we're gonna save this part, we're gonna slope this part.
Yeah, and what you're gonna wanna do is make sure that the slopes, if you look at the 155E5, it's very minimal as far as what the standards are. And it's basically saying, except for rock ledge, you know, all areas affected by the excavation, otherwise stripped vegetation, shall be spread with topsoil or strippings, if any. But in any case, covered with soil capable of sustaining vegetation, shall be planted with seedlings or grass, it'll prevent erosion, okay? And then it talks about slopes, all slopes except for exposed ledge shall be graded to a natural response for the type of soil for which they are composed. So you don't want erosion, okay?
Right.
Might want a people walk out and say, all right, you know, what are your plans for here? And you say, well, this might be a problem area over here, this is what we would like to see, okay? Now, if you're gonna continue doing your, you're gonna stop excavating on your property, but you're gonna continue using it for your hauling in and processing, then that would be like an exception, you're saying that was an existing use. And that's where, you know, I said that I'm not stuck with that. So if you say, well, you can continue doing that, if you're using that entire area, well, that's good. Maybe of areas that aren't being used, then it may start a natural reclamation by itself. But if you just stop and you say, I'm done, I'm not hauling anything in, I'm not hauling anything out, I'm done excavating, then there's 12 months in which to reclaim that property.
So, yeah, I mean, without making it complicated, you need to, any slope you have, you need to retain it.
Mm-hmm.
One way or the other, with a retaining wall or a decent slope, depending on the soils, decent slope to limit erosion. And the other big thing is, you either need to limit or eliminate runoff.
Right.
So, for example, in my, where my pit is, going, when you get to my pit, the ground is, I'll just say, zero elevation, and then I go up a driveway that's 14 feet high. And then I go down into my pit. So nothing ever comes out of my pit, except for what's on that driveway, you know what I mean? So I've retained all my water within my bowl, if you wanna, if you wanna call it that. So in my, you know, I mean, you could get, you don't have to get too complicated with the retaining of the slopes and this and that.
Right, yeah. Whenever soil's different.
Yeah, I mean, sweet ferns will grow on sand.
Right.
The other issue too is typically when we were doing the engineering of the
The other issue too is typically when we were doing the engineering and this stuff was natural angular pose or less. So when the sand comes down, if you, if it comes down naturally, you don't want any straight slopes. They're gonna collapse and kill some. So if it's natural angular pose, just like you're getting up the road right now, or less, then it's considered safe. Cover it with something that'll, some growing medium and get it to sprout. And it should maintain itself unless there's obviously a water coming in on erosion basis.
What's supposed to be considered a decent slope, a two to one slope?
It depends on the soil type.
That's natural, like a sand, natural angular pose.
It could be, you know, three to one. Typically it's two to one. You know, one to one is not acceptable. But it's, like I said, depends upon the soil types. This is what you're gonna have to do. And then in the height of the, of the base, depending on how far out you have to come to achieve that, so. Did you do more?
Yeah, I just, so basically what you're saying is that unless they cease operation of the area, they don't need to start.
Within 12 months, we have to reclaim it.
Right.
Or do your solar farm.
Change of use.
But if they're, if they're using it, if they continue, if they cease the use as an excavation area, cease that use, but they're using the property as, for like construction, uh, activities, they don't have to do the reclamation within a year, correct? They kind of postpone.
Slope should be done.
This is, this is what you guys are.
Fits down, right.
So the board needs to have a further discussion is what you're saying, as to how to proceed.
Yeah.
And what we require. Okay.
And if that, my suggestion would be that if that activity had not been occurring before, that it doesn't begin to.
Begin now.
Begin now.
Yeah.
And again, remember, on 155 E5B, there are exceptions. So if they decided that we're gonna start a bulk, a bark mulch business in this area, they could come before the planning board and say, it's perfectly level, you know, I've got slopes up in here, no one's gonna hear us, no one's gonna see us, and this is what we wanna do is do the, you know, the bark mulch. That would be an exception from the reclamation because they want that level area to stockpile the bark mulch. So there are exceptions that can be incurred and granted.
I mean, the real intent of the reclamation is, one, safety, two, erosion and water, you know, you know, water issues, so you have no runoff, no pollution, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, that's, it's stabilized from a.
Yes.
Back to the point of primarily safety, obviously, on steep slopes, but then after that water quality.
The nature can take over and.
Start rolling trees again.
All right, well, that's good. Thank you very much for coming. Yeah.
Well, we only, after looking at your ordinance regulations, the only question I had, which you may wanna double check on, is in the last part under Part 11.11.5 appeals. It talks about any person affected by the planning board's decision may appeal to the zoning board adjustment. And any appeal of a planning board decision under this chapter, under 155E, is appealable under 155E9, which is appealable to the regulator and not the zoning board adjustment.
So they would appeal back to us?
Back to, yes.
Okay, so we need to make that zoning change.
Yeah, because this, this is in conflict with.
Yes.
The statute. And then the only other part is when you talk about a permit shall be issued for five years and renewable every five years. It doesn't provide for, 155E does not provide for a renewal process, but I would think that instead of renewable would be an update every five years, I think is what you, you want, basically. And renewable would be for like any bonding that you may have for reclamation that you require for the reclamation. So you wanna make sure that the bonds are up to date for the reclamation and the plans are up to date every five years, which would run with the ALT requirements. But renewable, as you hear, you say the planning board site plan is valid for 25 years.
Correct.
So that's the expiration date. And what you want is just to have updates, new plans every five.
See, we issue a permit with a number on it, and every five years we'll issue a new one. And that's when we get to go see what has been going on and all that. That's really good that way.
Renewable is just kind of a, kind of a.
Change the language is what you're saying.
Yeah. The reason we, the other reason we wrote that is in case five years from now, there's an entire different body of people on the board, that the next board couldn't just go out and say, well, we're not gonna allow this to continue. In other words, it was, it was grandfathered in the sense that once you were excavating and you were in compliance, that somebody else couldn't come in and stop you, was, I think, why we wrote it.
Yeah, this one has to do with a permit, though.
Well, that was, that's what I mean with, when we permitted it, the idea was five years down the road, somebody couldn't come in and deny you a permit. I mean, how did, how did other towns treat that?
Well, when you say it's renewable, that's when they could do something about it. If you said a permit was good for 25 years, permit expires in 25 years.
Yeah, and review, down, review in five years.
Review and update the plans every five years.
Right.
But not, not renew.
Right.
Updated instead of renewed.
Plans, updated, updated plans and review.
Right. That's, but that's how that got around to us.
And if there's a change, then we'd have to make an acquittal.
Then have to go through the, the, hearing and everything. That's part of the statute. Okay? All right.
Great, thank you a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
You're welcome.
All right, so we'll go back to approval of minutes of March 8. Anyone have any changes?
Just, um.
Thank you so much.
You missed on the footstep.
Don't take it personally. So keep this. There's gonna be lots of questions.
Are you new?
Right.
I've been on the board for a while, two years. I'm used to it.
Red, have a good night.
Yeah, no, I think. She's giving you the lead.
Sorry, I've never seen you.
He just maintains a little pro tip of himself. He didn't make up. Oh, you do it the way you want.
See you, Joe.
See you, Joe.
Good evening.
Yeah. All right, the only thing I have is Gary, it's Gary Mott, not not. M O T T.
Oh, Mott? No, I don't know. Not from here.
I'm just saying.
M O T T.
M O T T, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I pulled the minutes today, I'm like, I haven't seen them.
Oh, here.
All right.
All right, so.
Oh, no, I gotta go get them out of the, the contract. I made copies, I just wanted.
I have a copy. Oh, yeah, I have that.
All right, so I did not staple these. It's in here, but.
I have a copy.
Yeah, I didn't know who might, who might not have printed it out, so here's, um, I do have one question for you.
Yeah.
Uh, who's the chair now?
Me.
Okay, I thought that would've changed, 'cause she got this back in March, so I assume. So we just need to, that's one change we need to make is the chairman. It says Lloyd, 'cause he was the chairman, so, um, so if you can just move over that super quick, I think, all's I'm looking for is just, you don't even need, I mean, if you want a motion, Tony should have the motion, um, just to forward it to the board's selectmen for approval and execution.
And what are we doing is different than before, just extending.
We're extending it because the deadline was April 30th.
Are we going to stay with it?
Yep, well, yeah, the cost is the same. It was just, the deadline was April 30th, then with Mike leaving and Susan coming on.
Yeah.
So we extended it.
September 30th.
To September 30th, yep.
If you need a motion, I'll make the motion.
Second. All right.
Okay, thank you. Um, wait to bill. Okay, all right, good. So I will, um, forward this to Karen once I receive the corrected last page, and then ask her to put it on the board's left-hand agenda. Okay?
We can do it Monday, for sure.
Yep, if I get it by then, but yeah, which I, today's Thursday. And she needs this stuff by tomorrow, okay? So she knows it's coming?
It would be helpful, yeah. You can just shoot her an email.
Okay.
Does she have this contract?
No, because you hadn't approved it here yet, so I wasn't gonna give her something that we had forwarded. So, um, Tony made a motion and Jack seconded, and we're gonna change Lloyd to Bill.
And that's it?
Yep.
Changes? All those in favor?
Okay, so then.
All right, so, L F T, property holdings LLC.
Yeah, which is what I'm gonna speak to, actually. So, um, a couple of things real quick. Steve Wingate felt that, um, for some reason, he reviewed the natural resource chapters one more time, just like a month ago, and felt that he, there was one area that could've included a little bit more information. So I actually have a revision to that. I need to incorporate it into it, and I'm just gonna snip it, like snip that part for you guys, so you're not reading the whole chapter again. So I will incorporate those and get them to you for the next meeting. The milfoil.
Yeah.
So I, um.
You're ready for it.
Well, I kinda went over you. Not over you, but what I did was I went to the town reports, and I've compiled all the information from the milfoil, 'cause why recreate the wheel? Um, and I also took information from the joint milfoil board.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna combine all that. I've got it all in paragraph form. I just need to make sure things are flowing, and that should be ready for review two weeks from now. So if that's okay with you.
Sure.
Kinda went and did it. If that's all right, unless you have something else to add, but you wrote them, so.
I may have.
Yeah, you did. Well, well, you know what I mean. Your name's on it.
All right, if you wanna just email me that piece and.
And have you proof it first?
Yeah, and then.
Perfect, okay.
I promise I'll, I'll get to it.
Yeah, no, so if it's okay, um, the board approves me to go ahead and try to write the section, so that's, um, close to actually pretty much being done. And then there was one more thing in that. Maybe I wasn't, I don't know, I can't remember now, sorry.
Okay. All right, so next up is L F T, property holdings LLC, and Alby Lotmerger.
So before we start, we, um, Alana Alby requested to have this put on the agenda, and she is not here. So I have not heard from her. I don't know if something happened or if she forgot, um, but this should be tabled now, um, which will allow you plenty of time to read this and review it. And for those who weren't here, I think it was Bill and Matt, just, just wanna reiterate that it's privileged and confidential, so it only is in front of the board's eyes. The board can release it, but just needs to vote on releasing it to public. So, um, read it, and then at the next meeting.
Well, I think we should probably release it. I think the tranchitas should be able to see it.
Right, so that's.
My opinion.
That's the discussion we should have tonight, is whether or not to release it. And if so, then we give it to them, and the tranchitas and Alby.
Right.
Everybody, and Alby has, um, Attorney Marbury. He'll, he can have a chance to review it.
Right.
Transparency, I think.
Yeah. Just as far as the actual conversation, we were supposed to relay this information to them tonight.
Right.
And with them not here, we should continue it, but I.
When do you get this till?
4:30, so I don't want you to rush, but I, I would like you to at least read it and make a determination whether or not to release it.
The letter?
Yes. 'Cause otherwise.
Any second? Call in favor?
Aye.
I have to recuse myself, okay?
I think part of the issue here is.
Oh, okay.
Well, you got a lot of issues raised in this letter.
There's, there's two and a half pages without giving an answer. That's a bit, you know, and, and I always appreciate with attorneys, like, there's a lot of issues where they give me, this is what needs to happen, boom, 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 and that's not here.
Right. It's our decisions, that's our decisions, our decisions. What you wanna do, it's not, this is what you should do.
But this is consistent with the way he works anyway. I mean, it is. He's a great guy, but it's just.
Absolutely. I'll go with that.
Yeah. There's no limiting that.
No.
No, that's right.
Billable hours.
Do you, the motion to table it, or?
No, we don't table the discussion.
No, table the, the.
No, we'll just continue it. You don't need to, 'cause it's not like a public hearing or anything. I just wanted to know whether or not we're gonna release it, so I could release it to everybody.
I mean, based on all the stuff in here, yeah, our ordinance have changed, so it can't be built out the way it is, so.
And then the big thing with the cluster, was approved as a cluster, then by taking, removing that one lot.
Right, it takes.
How's that change the density?
Right. It probably helps the density out, but, you know, because it's taken away from the density and, common land still stays the same, so.
If they don't do something with that subdivision, that lot is really worthless. The two of them on the road, I'm not sure what they're worth.
Could be better off, sending out the subdivision, so.
Which, you have the authority to do so.
Partially. I wouldn't make them do it all, but I would make them do it probably partially.
Well, as old as the subdivision is, it's, it, it, wouldn't he have to go back to the state to?
Oh, yeah, you know, the state province and all that. Place to get, we do all the engineering because the road would sit there right now.
Right.
If it's gonna be public, so.
So basically, you can't sell your lot because.
Right.
But it gives a lot.
Well, there's a bond.
The body's gonna be done on a new engineer, so.
The town's been collecting money on it, so.
Separate lots of record.
No, we don't have the money.
No, it's been collecting the tax.
That's, that's.
Same with Woodford, no difference. But I don't know if it's in current use or not, it might be, I don't know.
Yeah.
Like, Woodford's in current use.
Well, it's the same issue with that subdivision on the basin too, wasn't it? There were that mess of.
Oh, yeah, the mess of blocks, they aren't really there, yeah. It's all straight.
All right, anyone have anything else?
So you're gonna let Marbury know and the tranchitas?
I will, um, yep, I have it electronically, so I will forward it to Alana. Um, I do not have Nisa Tranchitas information.
I got Frank's, don't know where I can get it.
Frank, I have little Frank, but.
I have either, I have both, so I'll get you his.
I have Lisa's.
I'll get you the email address, yeah, I have Frank's anyway, so.
And of course, I'll CC Attorney Marbury as well, and.
I'll get it to you tomorrow.
And I'll let Roger know that we released it.
Yeah.
So that in case Marbury contacts him, he knows, and he can speak to it at their expense.
Yeah. I'll number it. I have both, I have his number, my number, state.
I'll get his email address.
Yep, um.
And this is his, that's Frank's number two.
Yeah, that's probably his.
Okay.
He'll probably, she'll probably respond faster. So I just have, um, so Roger's been working on this for quite some time, this letter, so I have not provided him the information, 'cause we needed this sooner rather than later. So now, just to let you guys know, I'm going to now give him the Hunter file.
Oh, you haven't given him that?
No, he's been.
Okay, so that's.
Working up.
So we have.
I'm not giving him more than one task.
So we have, we can't, we can't even discuss that, was?
Well, you can discuss it, but I don't have answers for you, 'cause he hasn't reviewed it.
The what file?
Oh, you weren't here. I apologize.
Did you read the minutes, the last part of the minutes this week?
No.
Well, at least he admits it. It was Matt's concern.
The minutes you sent out last night, 2:30?
It was a concern with, Steve had come back to the planning board and requested, um, to remove the burn that was in front of.
Oh, oh, yeah, well, it's over.
And so forth. The concern I have is that by removing the berm, you're changing the way the zoning board would have weighed the criteria of the special exception, because it's no longer back behind a hill.
Mm-hmm.
It's now out in front of, you know, up on.
You wanna go with fantasy, a little of. Right, right.
Stockhead fence.
It came to the planning board, I don't, I was not that.
Yeah, I was at that meeting where he came and talked about that.
So the concern is, you know, obviously, this is an contentious issue, and this, you know, one was heard by the zoning board by one applicant, and then another applicant came, it had to be substantially different as being to the issues.
Yep.
Well, now, they're taking what.
Thank you.
A pacified zoning board and saying it's a number there.
There were conditions that the zoning board put on it.
Correct.
Uh, and, um, I don't remember if the berm was one of the conditions.
It was not one of the.
It wasn't a condition, but it was what they were.
Presented.
Presented, correct.
So, so it certainly could have factored in their thought process and their approval, yeah.
Matt's thinking is that we don't have the authority to change what was approved by Z E B A here.
Is that that's how they weighed it, and that's what was presented.
Which could, it could be, it could be liable from the original applicant, and I think that's what my concern would be.
Yeah, but, and I'm certainly not an expert on this, but, you know, it comes to this board for approval of a site plan, uh, subject to conditions that are placed on it as it goes through Z E B A, so I think the right thing to do is get an attorney to look through this whole thing.
That's what we're doing.
I agree with you. This is, this is what was presented, everybody says, looks good, make sure it has this, make sure it has that, so they wrote these, those things in, but didn't specifically memorialize some of the things they were looking at, if it's substantially, you know, and again, then it becomes, okay, is it a substantial change from what they looked at, or is it, uh?
It's a hill.
Huh? Incident, right. Yes, and so, no, I, absolutely.
The last meeting, who was bringing up?
Yeah, it was.
Building a picket fence.
Right, no, I was here when you talked about, about the fence for screening, and.
Yeah, it's, it's the height difference, 'cause it stated it was only gonna be a certain amount of feet above the berm over there, so.
Yep, okay, that makes sense.
It's certainly, be glad you have an attorney look at it.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know about Roger, I mean, that could take a while.
Well, a quick question, who represented, which attorney represented the town when the appeal, wasn't there an appeal? Oh, no, not of the Hunter, that was the.
He wouldn't, they wouldn't hear a appeal.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Right, right, and, yeah, and.
Special exception.
Attorney Sager was involved in any of the conversations that related to that.
Get in.
Yeah, they.
I'm just wondering if we should be asking Rick for the review instead of Roger, if Rick has previous, like, knowledge of.
He's not, that's not a planning board.
I know, it's, he's not planning board town council, I understand that, Roger is, but we have had.
I guess you could probably ask him the question, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, consultation commission has, is, Roger is their attorney as well, but they've had Rick Sager review things in addition, so.
You have two issues, you have, one, did the plan, did the zoning board, you know, did the fact that it was moved back behind a hill affect how they weighed the criteria? And then you have the second issue, issues, did the fact that it was moved behind the hill affect whether they would rehear the application? Because it's not easy to get a zoning board, it's not supposed to be to rehear an application. In other words, what they're trying to avoid is.
Substantial change.
What they're trying to avoid is people going back again and again and again and again for a variance for the same thing, there has to be something substantially different about it. So the question becomes, would the zoning board?
Well, and as I remember, one of the things that was different is the location on the property, because he had them right up by the road.
Right.
Uh, and I think there were more units under the Zimmerman plan than, than.
Yeah, they were horizontal and they were.
So, but you're right, you know, so what's, what's a substantial change, and where's the threshold?
You have two issues that he has to look at, yeah, not to mention aesthetically, it's gonna be better behind the hill, right, I mean.
Absolutely, yeah.
If he brings it down.
Exactly. I know, I know, the gate's still that up.
Well, hopefully, he doesn't, he's not using that, he's not in business.
I haven't seen anybody go that, go that way.
But you don't stand down.
I'm not there every single day and every minute, so.
I mean, he's got locks. I mean, I took a ride up there a couple of weeks ago, he's got locks on the field, or somebody's got locks.
Yeah, he's got some stuff in his own.
Yeah, but. It's for a fighter, he lives that, he locks on.
So, yeah, what he says is his stuff sitting there, yeah.
All right, so will I ask Roger to review it, Leanne?
Or Rick.
Or Rick?
Well, it's up to you guys, not me. What do you want me to do?
I hate to say this, but I would prefer Roger to review it, in my, in my opinion.
Roger or Rick?
Roger, Roger, right, he's attorney, and, uh.
In not a roundabout way, having given a decision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know he's roundabout and he's not definitive, but.
He knows.
Yeah, he knows, and, and, you know, most attorneys are like that, you pay him for billable hours, I mean, actually, I'm saying that way, I don't want.
Paying for an answer.
Basically, that's why.
Not, okay, not a disorientation.
Yeah, well, good luck with that. So I do have one question, looking forward, do you anticipate moving any meeting dates in the next two, three months?
Oh, gosh, um, I don't.
And the only reason I ask that is because I work hard to plan when I'm gonna go out of town.
Yeah.
Around planning board, and of course, last month, when you moved the meeting, it moved it to the week that I was.
I know, but that, yeah, that was.
Well, but again.
We didn't mean to do that, no.
If we'd identified that the month before.
Yep, um.
So, there are gonna be times when we don't need to have a meeting because we don't have any business.
But we didn't have it, uh, unless you.
We didn't have.
Well, canceling a meeting, though, is better than.
That's right, right.
Changing.
Moving the meeting.
Right, is what messes you up, so.
Yeah.
The only thing that I'm going to say is, I, I think that we need to, if you wanna look ahead, let's make a decision about the 4th of July.
Until the 5th.
I won't be here on the 21st.
The 5th of July is a Thursday, so it's the holiday weekend.
I will not be able to go to that.
Well, it's whether you can or can't, it just, let's just make a decision, I don't have any shit.
We can just forego having it that day.
Correct, and that's, that's not, that's a work session technically, it's not a meeting, so if we have applications, we have the 19th. So you wanna cancel the July 5th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
So, um, I know that Loreen is back in town in May sometime, but I don't know when, so we'll have her back at the meetings sometime in May, or maybe start in June, for sure. Um, I, I don't foresee having to change May or June's dates if we cancel, that's one thing, but I don't foresee having to change them, and that was just, um, when is?
So July, so I have.
Memorial Day is the 28th, yeah, we don't even meet that Thursday, we meet two weeks before Memorial Day, and then summer, well, there's no real holidays except for 4th of So, and, oh, and Labor Day falls on a Mon, well, it's always a Monday, on the 3rd, but we don't meet until the 6th, so I think we clear.[1709.41]